So I'm going to set the stage and then I give Craig and Dwayne an opportunity to talk a little details and then we'll see about trying to answer your questions. So one of the issues that came up as we were going through the bond campaign was some of the projects that were at the end of the list and concerns that people had that they weren't going to get done, and also the order of some of the projects in there. And current or returning board members will recognize that there was conversation about this as we were going through the development process. And one of our major obstacles to doing more projects has always been capacity inside the organization. And when you think about capacity inside the organization, it's our ability to, through the business office, to manage the projects, through the facilities office, to manage and lead the projects, through the support offices, so think technology, staffing, et cetera, to manage the ancillary work that goes on in order to bring those projects to a close. And so we've had kind of a rule of thumb, four projects a year is a good number for us. This last year, we did six. We were stretched a little thin. And so from that standpoint, when we built the facilities master plan, that was our guideline, is to try to do it four projects a year, which is why when you looked at the 20 projects that remained, that stretched out over a five-year period of time. So as we were hearing from people during the election, and there were concerns then that came in after the election about what happens to projects at the end, one of the things that I went back to the facilities and business offices and said, "Listen, I understand why we can't do more, but what conditions would need to occur in order for us to do the projects more quickly than we have proposed and that was passed by the board?" And so the charge I gave them was, "We know we've got a five-year plan with four projects per year."
It's a seven-year plan.
There's seven years, sorry, I keep saying five, thinking of the bond sales from the first one. So we've got the project timeline passed by the board, which you have in front of you in the big one. And then, "I know that's the bookend on this end," so my charge to them was, "What's the bookend on the other end? I know this is the past plan, what's the fastest you could do it?" Recognizing that that gives us the latitude to talk about what happens in between. So that was the charge that I set to Dwayne and Craig was, "Come back and tell me if you were to do it faster than we have now, which might give us the opportunity to do things like take advantage of construction inflation reduction, might give us the opportunity to fulfill the intentionality of the bond by getting the projects done quicker and helping people at the end of the plan see their projects done sooner. What would that look like? What would it entail?" So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you two and let you walk through with them how you brought us to that other bookend.
So I just want to emphasize that this isn't Craig's plan, it's not Dwayne's plan, it's not Steve's plan. This is a plan that can have lots of input, a lot of variations. This is one version of a possible way to answer the question that the superintendent posed to us, and that is, is there a way to speed up or put into implementation the bond-funded projects sooner than we currently have in our approved timeline? That question came from community members, it's come from staff, it's come from a lot of different places, and the superintendent was responding to that, and he charged us with the responsibility to answer that question. So you won't hurt my feelings if you totally reject this this evening. In fact, my life becomes a whole lot simpler, okay? I don't have to carry out these projects in an accelerated schedule. I don't have to pay more attention to the funding and making sure it's matching and all those kinds of things. I don't have to listen to Dwayne whine about the workload that we're putting him under with all these accelerated projects. Please, don't accelerate this plan if you have any compassion for us whatsoever, okay? But if you feel like this is a good idea for this school district, you think it's a good idea for the kids, you think it's a good idea to save money, then you may want to consider this plan because I believe it does all those things. And I wouldn't bring it to you if I didn't, okay? And so I'm not going to insult your intelligence. You can read the information that's here. I assume you have read it, okay? And so instead of going through this item by item, I know you have questions, I know you want to get right to what you want to know, and so I think that's what we should do in the limited time that we have left this evening. I assume the board president has a hard stop at 10:00.
Yes.
Okay? Then we don't have a lot of time. So if you want Dwayne to go over maybe just briefly the current schedule and then the accelerated idea, I'll have him do that, and then we'll just throw it open to your questions. And we'll try and do the best job we can to field those questions, to try and give you a comfort on what this might look like if we were to accelerate the project. So Dwayne, why don't you go over exhibit one and exhibit two with the board?
I have two comments to add on yours.
Okay.
The reason for doing this...
You don't whine, right?
No, I don't whine. I might be playing low, but what made this worth the effort, to put this together in such a fashion, is it does two things. It adds value to the district, it gets us more value in our buildings, but we get kids in renovated and finished buildings sooner. That's the real benefit. It's about the kids, okay? So it's worth the work that we put into this, and we'll have to put into it.
It is.
So I just wanted to say that. So you've got two schedules there. One says original construction at the top, and most of you have seen this before, but we're in the 2017 year at the moment, and we're doing the, and you'll see that Longfellow Elementary where the green is started, it's under construction, it will finish next year. West High Phase 1 is under construction, and I had it originally finished in 2019. I think we can actually do it sooner whether we accelerate or not, okay? So we also have the design work going on, we talked about earlier, for the new North Liberty, Liberty, Lincoln, and Man. Those are to the left of the line because we actually, you know, went out on a limb there and said that we had to start some of these before we had the approved master plan or the approved bond because we had to have these projects ready to start in the spring in order to keep them going. The number I threw at you a little while ago about the 24 and 54 million, if you go to the next to last line, those are the dollar amounts of the GO bond projects that were starting in these particular years. So in 2018, we're starting almost 24 million in projects, it's 23-8, and 2019 is 54-7. So that's where that number came from this evening, and you can see how it spreads out, it tends to taper off towards the end, of course, and 2019 is obviously our big year in this plan as it starts. And you also see, Steve talked about four projects, well, if you also look and let's just take 2017, and you go up a little bit from the bottom, you'll see where it says "Finish four and start two." That's what we did this past summer. We finished four projects and started two, and we had four in design. So this next year with this plan, we have finished one, start four, and designed four, and one is in progress, so you can see how that starts to build on us, okay? So if you go to the next page, the second one where it says, any questions on that to start with? Pretty straightforward, okay? Proposed accelerated timeline. You're going to see now, in 20, let's go to 2018, and you're going to see those same projects starting, the new elementary, Liberty, Lincoln, and Man, but you're also going down the page, see a bar in the middle of the year, mid-year in 2018. But that represents projects that if we start, if we approve this plan, start designing projects, these most likely won't start till the middle of summer, okay? They're not going to be right, there's no way we can physically get the design work done, start these, the day schools out like we typically do. It'll be later in the summer. So I put that mid-year line there. We chose some projects to accelerate. The first two are pretty simple in this first year, North Central and Southeast, we're going to start in 2019 anyway, so we're kind of accelerating these projects by six months. Well, how can we do that? Well, both those projects have additions on them, and those additions can be started mid-year, they don't have to be done for school next fall, they can certainly be done for school in 2019. So we're going to start sooner and take advantage, hopefully reduce our inflationary costs on the projects and do them sooner. There are additions and exterior structures that can be done that does not affect what goes on in the building, okay? Then if you go down the page a little bit, you'll see Tate and Alexander. And with both of those ahead, they moved all the way from the end up to the beginning, so why in the world would we do this? So a couple reasons. Tate, there's a lot of pressure on Tate right now, the enrollments are increasing, they don't have a gym, they don't have a functional activity center, they need it. And they need the classrooms. And Alexander, we've got two Duplex modules sitting down there now, and because of what we've done with some of our resource allocation dollars, we've got more features than classrooms than we need, we can move that up. But both of these projects fit the same criteria as North Central and Southeast, they have exterior structures that can be built without affecting what goes on in the building, so we can start those as well. Those make logical sense to start. If you go to 2019, and some of this is, maybe gets a little bit deeper in the weeds, but I want you also to look at Southeast Junior High, and there's a red box around. That's the 10-plex, it's sitting there right now, okay? That 10-plex will eventually go to Northwest. I left it the way, Northwest didn't move for that very reason, because we need 10-plex to face through that building. If you look at Schimmick and you look at Kirkwood, you see a blue box. Well, we purchased an additional 6-plex for Lucas this past year. So we have a 6-plex sitting at Lucas that once the boundary changes and the new Hoover opens up, as the new Hoover, some of the enrollments are going to change, and we can move that 6-plex to Schimmick and then to Kirkwood. Even though I did move Schimmick up a year in the process, we moved Kirkwood up two years to facilitate that. The question mark that still needs to be resolved, if you go down to Lemmy, which is closer to the bottom, there's a yellow one there. So I don't know if we're going to have, we may have some additional modular classrooms at West High that we'll be able to use, we've got 10 of them sitting over there, that we might be able to move to Lemmy. We may come across another 6-plex or 8-plex or whatever in the process, but I'm leaving that door open for, maybe we use some of the buildings we already own, just move, okay? But we can move Lemmy up as well, and that got moved up three years. So as you go through this, you'll see that in 2019, we're now going to finish eight, start five, and design seven, and that number went from 54 million to 64 million. So it's not a huge jump, but it's a jump. There's more work to be done. That summer will tax our departments across the district. And then as you go through it, the Wickhams got moved up, Hornet moved up, every guy Phase 3 I moved up because I'm fearful that you're going to need that sooner than later with the enrollments, the way they're going. So we moved those up as well, and what you're going to see is that by 2020, the design work is done, but the construction goes through to 2021. So the plan's not done until 2021 as opposed to 2024. So we're going from seven years to four years for the entire plan, and that's what this does for us. Any questions on that?
Couple of questions on those. So the 6-plex goes to Schimmick, and then Kirkwood starts that mid-year, do you expect?
Actually, yeah, actually, they kind of lap over. It'll be the summer of 2020, we'll be done with the, we'll be out of class, so we can go ahead and move the 6-plex to Kirkwood. And the work that's going to be finished during the summer of 2020 will be done before school starts. These years kind of lap over.
And then on Lemmy, so if I'm not mistaken, it's a gym and music and art room.
Right.
So with their boundary changes, they have one temporary right now, I mean, there's a possibility that they wouldn't, what would you need the temporaries for then?
So that we can face through the inside of the building.
Do you have music and art that are going to need to move outside while we're in working on those rooms?
Well, actually, there's an addition onto the building for music and art, Steve.
Or you do put the addition on, but from a displacement standpoint?
Well, we're going to renovate the interior classrooms as well, so I need to remove part of the student body out of the building during it, like we're going to do at Schimmick. I mean, Schimmick and Lemmy are, Dwayne and start, where it designs, you know, they leave an open-air classroom. So there's a lot of walls, a lot of construction, things like that that have to be redone. He didn't go, it needs to be redone. So we need to vacate part of the building. Somebody needs to be outside while we're doing that, so we can hire a couple of regular classrooms.
I have other questions. Whenever you...
Well, what do you want? I think I've done the schedule unless you had...
No, I don't have anything else on the schedule. I guess that one of the things that was required is that we would have to hire some other people to manage this or to work it. And would that be a temporary position? I mean, what happens post when this construction's done then with those individuals?
Yeah, we believe that in order for us to make sure that we manage these to the highest level of accountability that we hold ourselves to and that you want us to manage, we would need another project manager to kind of double what Mike Leiden does right now in order to manage the projects. And we'd also need that clerical support because there's a lot of paperwork involved with managing the invoices that come in from the contractors, following all of that through the Appendix 9 process, keeping that all on track. We would need those two individuals. But you've got to realize that we'd be four years down the road, we'll probably add 1,200 students by that time. We'll be a lot larger district. There's going to be more projects, there'll be save projects at that point in time with probably an extended sales tax. And if there aren't the needs for those specific people, there's going to be attrition, there'll be retirements, there's going to be opportunities to absorb them back in should that be necessary. We're not, for those two positions, we're not really worried at all about finding them a home when the bonds are completed. We would just shift the cost of them from bond-funded projects to either save that they're working on or back to general fund if we downsize the organization.
Yeah, the optimistic look is that the save will be in place by then, we'll have much more to do.
So you're saying, so if I understand your clerical, Craig, you're saying that the construction manager's going to be paid out of bond funds during the bond work, and then after that even go into those other categories at that point?
Correct.
How many, so the clerical could also be in that as well?
Yes, that's correct.
What's the limit of person, and I know you're creative, what personnel can be part of that?
I've never, ever been accused of being creative when it comes to finances.
Oh, you're much too modest.
I've always been extremely cognizant of the law. We follow the law, and we always will follow the law. And so we don't push those boundaries. And the opinion that we received from the attorney says that what we're able to do is if you had purchased this service on a contract basis to work with your projects, then you can pay for them out of bond funds. So if I dedicate a project manager to doing bond funds, I can pay 100% of their salary. If I split their job and say, half the time you work with PEPLO projects and half the time you work with bond projects, then I can only pay for 50% of their salary out of the bond proceeds. So that's kind of the test you use, and so both of these positions would be pretty much dedicated to bond projects, and so we would pay for them wholly out of bond funds.
And then would they just be terminated when the projects are terminated?
Could either be takeover if they're, as they said, if there's save funding and we have additional projects, they could move into that. We've already looked at our employee base, and from attrition, we anticipate there's going to be spaces available that they could move into a currently existing space. The most flexible person obviously is the support staff person because there are lots of other places in the organization to which we could transfer somebody with those skills.
But I was confused by something you said, Craig, about we contract with firms to do this work for us, they would bring on a project manager or coordinator, or, it sounded to me like they were contract staff, not FTE of the district.
No, if they're, if it is something you could contract, then you can pay for it out of the funds.
But you're not saying you have to source from your construction contractors?
The opinion we received is that they can be a district employee and been paid out of bond funds.
Okay.
If it is something that you would normally go out and contract for, you can choose to hire it inside, just as you would pay for it out of the bond proceeds for the contract, you could pay for it as a salary.
It's probably cheaper to do it as an FTE for a four-year timeframe.
That's a great point, because I've worked with construction managers before.
There's no markup.
Exactly.
And they get anywhere from 6 to 8 percent, average 7.
It's super expensive, yeah.
Seven's the average that we found, so...
And on top of that, they get some of their expenses, so it can actually go up from eight to nine.
It's a cost benefit for contractors, yeah.
Really, we're geared up pretty well here. We've got it going pretty good with our staff, and with adding a few more, we feel like we can do the job.
Do you think two's enough, though?
We're going to have to also reorganize in our department and shift some duties to make it work.
So can we go ahead and, to the amount that they're working on bond products, projects now, can we go ahead and just move back to bond funding so that we can reserve some save funding for whatever we've got a deficit in save?
Yeah, I provided the board this afternoon with a revised spreadsheet that took out the construction management costs in my last email to you.
I think I missed that.
If you didn't make that, shame on you. It was only like a half an hour. So nonetheless, we did take that construction management fee out, and so it makes save look a little bit different.
I know we're going to have plenty of very specific things as we work through this plan, so I kind of want to just, good picture question. I love the idea of getting kids into remodeled spaces sooner than later, and I really love getting, you know, Tate and Alexander moved out. Those are things that I absolutely think need to be done sooner than later. The question is, we do have a finite amount of dollars, both with the bonds and everything else. We borrowed against save for quite some time, and I love the optimism that it will get extended. I'm going to work for that. But if we accelerate everything and we're done in 2021, what happens between '22 and '24? Because we've already spent basically all of our money out through there, and while there are plenty of projects that can get added on between those three years, are we going to have any money at that point to do anything in those three years?
That's a great question. So there won't be any bond proceeds left because we'll have spent those dollars, we'll have accelerated that process and spent them earlier. If save isn't authorized, we'll be working with our current PEPLO allocation that we have.
Or you go back to the, your stakeholders with another referendum and say, "We need, we need another elementary here," or "We need to do this renovation over here." And so the board would be forward-looking to make those kinds of plans as a part of your annual review process as we get farther down the road, you know, look out there and see and start setting that stage.
If you remember, we had five projects in the parking lot that didn't go through the facility master planning process, so there's things that we know that need to be done. So we will hope that save gets reauthorized and gives us the flexibility to do that when we get to the end of this list, and then rather than waiting till 2024, we can start attacking those 2021. But in the absence of that, as we move forward through the plan, those things on the wish list will become more, we'll have them, they'll be tighter, we'll have a much better idea of what those things are. So if we do get to that point where the option is to go back out to the voter, we'll have a pretty tight list of things that need to be done at that time.
And we've already started developing other projects that we're going to add to that wish list or that parking lot because at West High, we're going through a schematic design right now and looking at the scope, and there are things that that principal would like to do, frankly, aren't in the scope.
That's right.
And the principal can see how it's going to have the same admissions, so.
Yeah. Everybody has. We had one of our principals who will remain nameless who brought us some floor plans.
This brings me to a question that I've been wondering on along. So you say, and I, I'm really going to say that, or are we going to just do these extra wish list projects that our principals want?
Well, first of all, the financing piece, there's two savings you need to look at. I provided you with a chart in here in your board packet this evening, if you'll look at that, it's this one. And you can see that there's quite a bit to be saved in the way of overall debt cost to our taxpayer. None of this is realized in savings for projects where you can spend it somewhere else. These are interest savings and issuance cost savings, and they save on how much money we're going to have to levy against the taxpayer over the life of the bonds, okay? But still, it's a tremendous savings, and yes, we will save that as we lock in this interest at these lower rates, and if we continue to have, you know, good fortune of having lower rates when we do the second sale and the third sale, we'll be even able to save even more than what we're projecting here. So the answer to that question is, yes, I feel very comfortable about saying that we're going to save our taxpayers over $10 million in interest and issuance costs by moving to this model, okay?
And so one way to think about that is Craig and I were looking at different models that said, okay, at what point in time will we have the bonds paid off? Which, back to your earlier question, Sean, if at some point in time you need to go back out to the voters, we want to be able to share with them, rather than being paid off here, we think we can be paid off here. And so that's one of the big pluses for us as a district. You know, think of a homeowner with less interest to pay, right? So you're knocking a few years off the end of that mortgage. We could, we looked at three years potentially that we would be done paying the bonds three years early.
And remember that save funds can be used to buy down that debt. So if you didn't have a project that you wanted to use save funds for and it wasn't reauthorized, you could use those funds that you had to reduce the property tax levy.
And maybe one other thing to think about, Lori, so when we talked about this originally, we said, "All right, if the plan is at the end, so think Tate or Alexander." So it was five years out in, and we said, "Okay, we're going to do these projects at Tate, and we know that five years from now, we've got to look at the cost of construction inflation over that time, and so in order to make sure we can build a gym and a couple of classrooms, we're going to put this much money into it." So if you remember, the facility master plan has a scope for each one of the projects. If we accelerate that, we have two choices. We either build those three things that we said we were going to build and save a significant amount of money because we're not paying that construction inflation, or we go back to the staff at Tate and talk to them and say, "Given a budget of this size, which is what we allocated for here, what can we do now?" So those are the two choices that we have as we go through the project, and it'll be much smaller in scope for projects other than Tate or Alexander because those are the only two that are moving that far forward. Everybody else will have a little bit of wiggle room in there, they'll have a lot of wiggle room. So Alexander and Tate will have the most in that process.
So I think you've answered my question that the wish lists of, you know, swimming pool and West High...
No swimming pools, we're not doing swimming pools, but...
We're not going to be asked to approve that?
No.
Because there's $10 million.
I don't think you can because it wasn't in the retirement.
Athletic improvements?
No.
I don't know.
You might be, you might be able to squeeze a pool there. But for instance, like hills, we won't be able to look at it and say we could do something with hills there. But go back to the Tate example. If we said, "Hey, we were just going to do two classrooms and a gymnasium there, now we would like to do some kind of common space for them." We would have the ability to bring you back a plan that showed some additional enhancements. We said we wanted to add classrooms at Alexander. So the original plan was, let's add two classrooms. We accelerated five years, is there enough money in the original allotment to add four classrooms? There might be. So if there is through the design process, that's something that we bring back to you and use the board and have the opportunity to look at it and say, yes or no.
Special ed. Would we have the opportunity to improve special ed? Career technical.
Absolutely.
You sound like a broken record.
Yep, absolutely, both of those.
And now with Tate, you know, we're limited by land, although are we thinking anything acquisition on that one as well?
Tate actually has a pretty nice parcel to the east side of it.
Yeah, I think it's a little deceiving when you look at it because you tend to come in from the parking lot side and look at the...
Now, this is a revelation. I don't know how many meetings I've been in where everybody was saying, "Well, we can't do that at Tate because they're in space." And then now we're saying they're in. Well, that's great. No, amen. I think there's space there too, but if we're looking long-term on that facility, and I don't think that our, you know, as an alternative high school, we're going to look, that it's going to get any smaller over time, that we ought to look at expanding that as well as part of the long-term.
We are limited at Tate in that we have a geothermal well fill behind the building.
Right.
So adding on to the, what I would say is the south, really is a practical, adding on to the east or west is. East is better than west because west has the parking lot. So we are limited, but there is a space available there. And I might jump into it because I asked Craig if I could do this and talk about construction inflation and really what that means, just a two-minute syllable summit. And part of your question tonight at the board meeting was really relevant. And part of your question tonight at the board meeting was really relevant. You know, everybody knows what the, they hear about the consumer price index, you know, and, and my social security hopefully is gonna go up two or three percent a year or weeks, you know, and yours will eventually. But that's different to construction inflation. Construction inflation has different components. One part of construction inflation is the global commodity market. So you need to watch commodity markets. If copper's going up and oil's going up and plastics going up and tin and zinc, you name it, those commodities are all used in construction and that's one piece of it. So that, that, those items typically lead the way first. I think back to 2004 or '05, China was buying all the scrap steel in the world because they were gearing up for their industrial revolution over there. The prices of steel went up 22%, even though inflation may only gone up three or four that year, okay? But that led the way. The other piece of that is the local construction market and the availability of labor, all right? And I've been asked this many times, do we have enough bodies and labor and the contractors pulling the required workforce to build it? And if they can't, they have to go, you have to bring in builders from further away. And that can inflate the cost as well. So there's really two pieces. It's the global piece and the local piece. And you have to think of it, construction inflation always leads inflation nationally. And typically, we always see a big bump in the spring and it's just the way the system is. But having said that, it's my sense that the University of Iowa has slowed down just a little bit, that there are more, the trades that really we got hung up on were, if you remember back to 20, somebody over here, electricians' bids. You know, the contractors in 20 only got one electrical bid.
Right.
They were so busy. And mechanical heating and cooling, those guys have tended, have a little more capacity now than they've had the last four years. So I think there is. And the contractors that we deal with are the mid-sized contractors, on the liberties and the North Centrals and the Southeast. So they're gonna be mid-sized like the Paulus Lucina. They have capacity. They're actually looking for work for next year. So I feel pretty good about it. I don't see it as an issue now. What can change is that the economy in general heats up and everybody starts building and designing and going. But the thing we have in our favor is we've already started designing our projects. We're ahead of that curve. If inflation starts to heat up next year or the year after, we're way ahead of them. We've already got our projects designed. We've got them shovel ready, the line go better, we're, and ready to bid. So we're in a good place that way. So even if it were to heat up, we're two or three years away from feeling that. We use three and a half percent inflation, four percent inflation in our model. It could easily go five, 10, 12 before we're done. And what we're doing is avoiding that potential by accelerating the schedule. We're avoiding the potential of adding even more cost to our project.
We've worked really hard too at biddings on a cycle, cyclical process. And so we've worked really hard to be on the front end of the cycle. It's been very beneficial for us, even when UI was doing a lot of their flood projects. We still managed to get our projects in from a timing standpoint so that they hit the pipeline at the beginning of the bid cycle. So everybody was ready to bid at the time. We weren't bidding later in the cycle and having four, five or six folks that had already taken other projects and so weren't bidding on ours. And so we, we've been pretty deliberate about making sure that our bids are, are getting out in that annual cyclical process upfront.
You're gonna have the same risk in the original plan. When you look at 19 and you are looking at $60 million worth of construction, that issue of available labor is, was gonna hit you in the original plan anyway, I think.
Well, so to follow up, so to follow up on Lori's question, from my perspective, and just to be on the record, I think it's really the best approach for the board to take, that as you start into these projects, I don't think you count on that savings, okay? It's not something that you make a conscientious decision and say, oh, we're gonna have $5 million at the end of this project, let's spend it up now. I think what you do is you see how the bids come in and when the contracts are let. I don't think you, I think you're very careful on the scope creep. You, you make sure that the projects are staying on time and on budget, okay? As you have them set forth here. And if you start to see that you've been able to bring these projects in under budget and you actually have physical savings that you've been able to quantify and accrue, then I think the board has every right to have a discussion on some adjustments that can be made. But until that time, I think it would be very premature on your part to, to count on that. Because a contract could come in over budget for some reason, given a set of circumstances, right? You're gonna win some, you're gonna lose some. And there's 20 projects here. And I can't say that every single one of these is gonna be right on the money ideal, okay? You're gonna have a little variation on these things, right? I know, I know. You're, you're, you're really good at what you do, but still, I mean, you can't control all the market forces, right? So my admonition to you is, understand that there is a construction inflation and saving component by accelerating the schedule. It most likely will be realized, but I wouldn't go out and spend it all the first project that you have.
We have ABs on the streets of Jibooti, but that's a drunken sailor. Operating costs. Accelerating these things, you don't get any idea from the state we're gonna get any more money in the near future. Every new room has to be clean, heated and cooled, all of those things. Speeding this up and having increased capacity also increase our operational, the overall operation cost. What's your take on that? Are we gonna have the money to, to clean and house and, and could it, and, you know, if, if you run into that situation where we're also getting pressured to lower class size and everything like that, well, are we gonna clean our rooms less or are we gonna have more teachers to give that you? Well, we're, we're gonna get into, into a situation where we're gonna have increased size if we don't have the increased suits to, to overcome that. We've got increased operational costs.
All of those things. They're always a part of every budget conversation we have. And we always have to be sure to live within our reoccurring resources, right? So every year, we have to make those very difficult decisions. But as we put new spaces in place, we also renovate and make more efficient spaces that we have. We have been getting some tax credits back and those types of things for energy efficiencies we're building into our system. And yes, our, our goal here was to air condition all of our spaces. But if you look at our plan in general, that, the biggest cost, operational cost would be to air condition all of our spaces. And that was in the first three years of the plan anyway. And so the subsequent operating cost for building those additional renovated spaces tails off in comparison to that larger chunk when we actually do air condition all of our space, instructional space. But that's kinda how I would respond.
Well, the other factor is the growth factor. There is something. You know, how much do we believe with the demographer tools or not? I don't know, but it's been demonstrated pretty accurate so far.
Yeah, we just looked at the demographer numbers for this last go around and they were 99.93% accurate. And so it really doesn't get much better than that when you're projecting things out.
Well, and I'd love to add to, I spoke with a builder and he doesn't share your take on competitiveness in construction in the next two or three years. In fact, the one I spoke with is gonna sit on the sidelines because they're not, he doesn't feel they're competitive enough. So that is, the opinions expressed are as long as that.
On all projects or school projects? Because I don't know how the guy's gonna make a living if he sits on the sideline.
Well, like I say, there's a difference of opinion.
No, I don't want debate to go, but I'd love to have that discussion.
I'm not gonna, yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Well, I, you know, that, that's my big concern. And I, so what have we done to look at? So we say we feel like the university is slowing down, but, but, I mean, they're gonna have stuff. I mean, they got the pharmacy building going up. They seem like they're constantly. Psychology building.
But they just finished up Children's Hospital. They just finished Hancher. Those were huge, huge projects that took up a lot of work.
And I think Corville's gonna have about 500, didn't they? Marilyn Del Paul say that at the joint meeting, about 500 workers next year. Tons of projects along those.
City High was sitting on some big projects.
I mean, another, another Heron, this building's gonna go up. So I, I just, I, so I guess could we get some like, show us the spreadsheet that's like here, you know, here's a number of projects? Because I just, we, that's all we hear about, right? Shortage of labor, you know, contractors constantly, everybody's troubles.
Actually, you have that? It's, it's in our official statement.
Okay.
The, the folks that look at our community put all that together for you as far as all the projects that they could determine were out there as far as current and future.
So we have that?
I don't know what pages those, they're on.
What official statement?
Huh?
Which official statement?
The full official statement that you approved.
The resolution for farming.
Right.
Okay.
We'll have to, we'll have to find the exact pages for you, but there's, they do have a section in there where they go through all the community projects. They, they look at the city and what the cities are doing, et cetera, et cetera, and they have them all listed out.
So is some of it anecdote? Yes, okay, it is. But I talk to contractors every day, but more importantly, I talk to architects every day, okay? And what you're gonna see on these, if we put these jobs and put them out for the design work, you're gonna see multiple, multiple proposals to do the design work. Architects are on the front end of the spectrum. And architects and engineers are looking for work right now. And they've actually let some people go. So they're looking to keep, maintain their workforce. So for me, it's more than just anecdote, talking to builders. It's what's, what's the design firm industry looking at for their future? And that'll tell you a lot, okay? I get that pressure from them as well. And that you'll see here in the near future.
So we should see a decrease in the cost of designs in the future?
Well, I think the competition's gonna be there and I think you're absolutely right.
What type of timetable are you looking for? I mean, obviously, if you look at the proposed acceleration, there's design arrows that are in the 2017, which is.
Well, and but Paul said, just what we did tonight moves that up. I mean, I, like, I don't know that anybody's super concerned about this. I'm not, like, design.
No, I'm just asking in general, what the time, like, when do you, we gotta do this.
Because in there, they talk about a lot, reference to time, time is of the essence. It's very important.
Well, let me just tell you what we've done so far. But I have put out an RFP on behalf of these accelerated projects, but I pull all the design firms that's subject to board approval and that they will, contracts will not be awarded unless this accelerated projects, the other ones are already in place. So the accelerated projects, if and when the board approves it, we can get started. But to save time, I asked for the RFPs, but they were all told upfront that there was the risk that they wouldn't be approved.
And when did this do?
Before the next board meeting.
So, so I understand that you, that you request designs you haven't got approved for?
We haven't awarded any contracts. I'm just requesting proposals.
You're requesting proposals on which projects and who did you request the proposals from?
From about 17 different architectural firms, the ones that are in our pool.
Which, which, which projects did you?
All the ones we're accelerating, North Central, Southeast, Tate, Alexander and City High. We wanna start that one a little sooner.
Do we even have a, we have, do we even know what we're building at City High?
Nope, we have architects figure out. They're, they're gonna plan it for us. They're gonna have community meetings as part of the design project.
Oh, so, okay. So, so they're gonna tell us our needs for career technical, the classrooms and everything?
Let's just back up a little. We did a building assessment of every building in the district. That's what we start with. And we did BLD, did that assessment back in January of 2013. That's the basis of all the designs. And then we've added space and needs that we requested through our planning process at the board. These projects are all approved projects in the master, facility master plan. So I've asked for is proposals to do the design work if and when we move forward. I don't think it's out of, out of line at all.
So, okay.
Can I ask when you made requests of those?
About two weeks ago.
So again, I apologize, it's, which were the ones that you, that you let out for, or that you asked for proposals on?
The ones that meet that green line in the middle of the year.
The green line for 2018.
Right. So you got Alexander, Tate, Northeast, North Central, and then City High. We wanna start the design work sooner because we realize we need to have community meetings for input on what that campus looks like. City High itself and West High have, I felt said, stay on the schedule that they're on. They have not moved.
But that's part of this architectural work is the community, the process to get community input on the designs and what space and.
Work with staff.
Career tech or special ed or music or whatever capacity.
Yeah, they, they're gonna take that facility assessment that we did and they're gonna meet with staff. We do all our projects and figure out what's, what the needs are in the buildings. So.
So we're not short cutting any of those steps along the way on this acceleration or following the appendix nine process?
Right.
Okay.
But that points out why it would be important for the board to make this decision sooner than later, because they have to have time to gear up. They have to time, time to go through those projects or process. And in order to get these projects started for next summer, you, you work backwards and time is of the essence. And that's why I put that in.
So what's the biggest risk of doing this? I mean, it sounds like the value proposition is our kids in the district get into better facilities, space, the rooms they need sooner. And that, I think, makes sense. But what can go wrong here? We talked about labor availability. I think that's an issue on the original plan, just that big spike in 2019. But this is the accelerated plan, you've got a spike, a big spike.
Eighteen.
In 18. And then it's continuing into 19 and starts tapering in 20. But, so we've got labor availability that's probably gonna risk maybe district capacity to actually, even with added staff. What could go wrong if we approve this and we get into it and realize, crap, this isn't gonna work? We've got, you know, stuff's not playing out the way we expect. What does that look like? What's the risk associated with that?
I've been here next year, next week, I've been here five years, okay? And what I've seen happen, we had Twain and we had Ben Allen, that we actually had bids, chose to reject them all, reevaluate the scope and rebuild, okay? That's the downside of any project. So if the market dictates to us that we can't afford to do it, we have two choices. We redesign and reduce the scope, or we sit and we wait and they don't get done on the same schedule. So that's the risk.
So we, we could choose, so we, we say, yes, we wanna do an accelerated plan sort of like this, but as we get into it and we get designs, we realize, oh, we over anticipated the labor market, our internal capacity to management will sit with some designs on the shelf until we have available capacity to start working on those things. But then you're constrained by building cycles and school years and stuff like that.
But if you don't, if you don't do the design work as soon as possible, you don't know what the, what that risk may be. So once you get it designed, then you can get it out there on the street. The other thing that we do as part of our process is that I require our architects to get two independent estimates by an outside independent estimating company. I don't rely on architect estimates during design. They actually, it's part of their fee, but they actually have, we have a firm that does that and they base all their estimates on current data. What's happening in the market today dictates what is in their estimate. Architects typically use historical data, what happened last year, earlier before. So we actually get pretty good data when we do our cost estimates during the design process. We know if we're gonna have an issue pretty, pretty soon in the process. It doesn't always happen on the bid day. We, we pretty much have made adjustments and done value engineering throughout the process to keep it in budget.
And that includes commodity prices and all that.
What's that?
Does that include kind of commodities and what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're using actual, the estimate they give me next weekly based on the jobs that were bid this week. So they're constantly updating their database. So it's real time data that we're, we're dealing with. So they get, they get, they stay on top of it and that helps us manage our projects and do a better job.
What about, you know, I guess my, you're a higher project manager and clerical work. You know, you speed it up, the chances of making mistakes, doing shoddy work, rushing things that need, you know, not measuring twice and cutting once.
Well, again, the quality of your design and the teams that you use, that's important. We have a pool of 17 architects and about 12 engineers who've all done schoolwork, who've all worked with us and have demonstrated their competence. and have demonstrated their competence. And so the design process really helps you define the scope on bid day. And if you get ten builders on bid day and there's less than ten percent spread from top to bottom, you've hit the bullseye, okay?
Maybe one other thing, cause they're new to this, so they don't know this. We deliberately, when we looked at the planning process years ago when we put this in place, we deliberately said, we will not choose an architect to do multiple projects at the same time. Uh, so when we have multiple projects going on, you will find there's different people presenting each of those designs because it's a different firm. So we like to make sure that they have the capacity to do the work, that they can focus on that job. And so that's one of the reasons that the list is so deep. Cause if we're gonna do these projects, we're gonna be selecting different architects and design firms for each of those projects so that they have the capacity to pay attention to the details. We don't want them spread too thin.
You don't create the same mistake over and over and over.
So, so I get that, you're spreading the, the contracting work across multiple contractors, and, and that makes perfect sense. Where I worry is more about your capacity to manage that many contracting firms operating all at the same time. I mean, I get this problem with A C T all the time. Oh, just go hire some more software companies, get another project going, make it all work, you know? Half the time, double your money and get it done really fast. There's only so much management capacity to oversee that much stuff. And I think that kind of gets into not measuring twice and cutting once, cause the brain power just can't be in sixty-five places all at the same time. So that's where I worry about the district leadership capacity to do this.
We've looked, we've looked pretty extensively at that, and as Dwayne mentioned, there would have to be some adjustments made to the facility management department as far as shifting some responsibilities within that department in order for us to free up that capacity that you're talking about for project leadership. And we have an idea how we might do that. Uh, we've talked, uh, I, in fact, I talked with Cabinet about that specifically this morning, about one idea of what that might look like. So we're very well aware of, of that issue. Uh, it's, it's a very valid issue, but one I think we can manage and overcome with some adjustments.
Managing, managing design and projects is what I love to do.
But there's one of you.
Yes, I know, but I also manage all the day-to-day activities. So if that can be reassigned, that lets me do what I love to do.
I have, I've seen this play out in so many ways, in software, not construction, but I've seen these risks realized, and so I'm glad you guys are...
When we did our risk analysis, that's one of the biggest risks, is making sure that we've got the internal capacity. It's, it certainly heavily weighs on, on Dwayne and Craig at the business office, the facilities office. It also weighs on technology, so Matt and Adam and Craig and I have had conversations about that. Uh, so we know that there are areas outside of what you see that will also be impacted. And so we've tried to look at it and look at those ripple effects and say, where else will there be stress in the system? And, and where's their give, and where do we have to make sure that, that we're being planful about a year or two out so that we can keep ahead of that?
And along those lines, we haven't had our visioning session yet, so we haven't talked about how we wanna spend our time as a board. It's another piece of it.
So to answer the other part of your question, Lori, is that the sooner you can make a decision, guaranteed, the sooner we can get it done.
So if we make a, I, my concern is, I mean, this is quite a bit. Um, and so if a decision is made by our meeting in December or January, is the cost savings still the same? How does that impact?
The difference is if, between November and January is that you lose, you're gonna lose some time. And if we start in January, it will really push us to get those projects ready for bidding by summer. So, he, he, not that we can't, we did it with Alexander when we first got here. You may remember, we're calling, didn't approve the facility master plan until January, we had to start in May.
Yep.
So we got it done, but if, if I had my preference, and you're asking me, and it is time sensitive, you would get this approved in November so that we can get started before the end of the year to get people involved? That would be my preference, I'm just giving you an honest answer. To get the work done, I feel like I need that much time.
And is there any halfway in that? I mean, is it do it all, or stay with the current plan because of needing to hire this other person and justify that expense?
Well, you know, kind of remember, like I said, they're, they're kind of like bookends, right? We've got the least aggressive and the most aggressive. Can you move to the middle? You certainly can't, we could put a whole nother timeline together. Uh, the further you move to the middle, the, the, uh, the slower we get into the facilities and the less money we save.
And honestly, Steve, the construction manager doesn't need to be in place until next summer. They don't need to be announced, they need me when we start the projects, so we have time to do that.
So you don't need them doing the design phase?
I need clerical help. They're designed, they help me keep the paperwork.
But not the project manager?
No.
We're, we're really construction season dependent here in Iowa, and that's why this becomes a timing issue. If we, if we lose December, if we lose January for design, not being able to get the projects out to bid, you lose, you lose your construction season.
So you shift forward a year.
In, in essence, what we would do is we would take all of these projects, if you decide not to make a decision until January, what I would suggest we do is we take all these projects that we were moving up to that halfway point, and we just move them to the next construction cycle, okay? And so that's, that's, it's, it's a really simple fix. But, you know, you, you give up, um, some of the things, some of the pros about accelerating the schedule by doing that, right? And that's a decision that you as a board need to make. Like I began this conversation, this is not my plan or Dwayne's plan, I have no ownership in this, you do whatever you wanna do. We responded to the superintendent's request because we have been getting this.
Most aggressive, most aggressive is what I have.
And so this is a very aggressive schedule, yes it is. Um, but it's, it's your maximum ability to serve your community in this capacity, okay? If that's not something you choose to do, that's perfectly acceptable to me. And Dwayne and I would probably feel really good about that because we can sit back and relax for a while.
Yes, I think you're right, you know, this is how we serve our community in this way. It looks like in twenty nineteen, that's all we'll be doing to serve our community this way. I mean, just speaking about board time.
Right.
And one of the things when the bond passes, the community's like, oh, we can move on to other things.
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, we can't. Because this, I mean, literally, just looking at the number of designs in that year alone, and the amount of input that takes, that's...
It's huge.
There'll be more items on appendix nine, yeah.
What?
There'll be more items on appendix nine.
Yeah, yeah, taking up, I mean, that's, you know, being very realistic, obviously a lot of your time, but you guys get paid to do it. I mean, you can hire some more staff to help, but, you know, our time as well, and anybody that comes on the board.
Absolutely.
And remember, we, we, you know, the most experience on this board is five years total of all the sitting board members. We have a very hard time keeping people in this position for various reasons, but burnout may very well, you know, be one. And I think that that's a concern, you know, that we need to consider is the pressure we're putting on the volunteers and the community to be able to, to handle equity and closing achievement gap and some of these really big... This, this is simple, this is math and construction costs and budgets, but closing achievement gap. You know, things that are really messy and intangible, and most people will ignore because, well, we don't know what, nobody knows what to do in the whole country, right? But I think a lot of us that got elected are like, we wanna do it. You know, I think we have the staff that's like, no, we wanna solve these problems, not just talk about them more and continue to see, you know, the, just discipline rate disparity between African-American kids and white kids that are completely out of balance. And all of that stuff, that's, I think some of us got elected, like, you know, we really wanna dig in on that. But that all takes time and energy too, and that, I mean, that's one of my concerns is, again, this is all we're gonna talk about for the next five years.
So one thing I tell my staff on a routine basis is that I never want the facilities to be the reason or a distraction for the education that has to take place. So the sooner we get them fixed up, those distractions also go away and create better learning environments. So they hear me saying it all the time, we can't be the distraction. It shouldn't be about the facility, it's about what goes on in those four walls. But those four walls shouldn't distract from what things people have to do. So there's a positive in doing this and that we'll get there sooner, so.
But other things might have to be on hold while we're getting this piece done sooner. I think that's sort of...
How much time do you think we're gonna, we're literally, we'll spend on some of these things? I mean, we went through approvals on three elementary schools and, you know...
Well, just twice as much time, I mean, just looking at the projects. So however much we spend, it'll be double in twenty nineteen.
That's what I'm asking, is like, how much time do you think actually as a board we just spend in any of these processes?
I think so far that takes up most of our discussion time, and we have the facility map and we have all of the... I, I mean, again, this is my third meeting, so, but so far, it seems like we take a lot of time. That most of our time is spent actually talking about this rather than other things.
Well, and I would think too that we would wanna have discussion about what's accelerated. It's not just, for me, it's not just as simple as this is the plan.
Right.
So there has to be some discussion of, I mean, part of what, what we sold to the voters was there was some flexibility built in with seven years in time. It would be reevaluating as we go along.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to do that reevaluation upfront if we're gonna hold true to that promise. We can't just say, oh, listen, or listen, um, cause, cause that's not keeping that word, that we're gonna continue to assess what we need and make changes along the way.
I'm sure that...
So there is the actual approval, and then there's the plan enough.
But that's what you say, you know, in November, we don't have to approve this, right? We really need to approve this little bit here, that we're talking about. You know, do we want those six things that are moved up to, you know, twenty seventeen, but in reality, twenty eighteen? Do we want those six things moved up? There's, you know, fifteen other ones on there that are moved up later. We don't have to have that decision made in November, right?
No.
No, actually, we're only asking for...
We may wanna move all those around at some other time, so.
This, this is just asking that four projects be moved up, actually, if you think about it, Southeast and North Central.
Tate, now it's in.
I think that's really what we need to have a discussion on and, and, you know, take action at the board table and do those things. If time is sensitive, it's sensitive on those, much more so than everything else.
And maybe that's a good point to, to keep in mind too, is that we've come back and revisited the facility master plan every two years. And so that's gonna be another part of the process as you walk through it, is to look at it, as Lori said, is it this project or that project? You know, we were able to identify some right now because of some of those aspects that Dwayne talked about earlier. They can happen outside the building, they're not gonna influence, influence learning that's going on right now. There were needs that weren't as pronounced in thirteen that are now, Alexander and Tate. So those were ones that were easy to say, let's move those up. But every two years, as a board, you're gonna have to go back through and look at it and say, demographics, is that where the community's growing, here or there?
It's a very extensive process.
Right, it is, and, yeah, and so that's something that you'll be doing every two years anyway. And so where, where they said, let's move these up here, that filled those gaps, but is that the order that they go in? Maybe not when you go through the facility master planning process again on those, those odd years.
Well, if we do it every two years, we're losing the opportunity to do that a few times.
We're only gonna be able to do it once in twenty nineteen.
And, and does that give us real true flexibility? You know, and if we do it every year, oh my, now you're really talking about a lot of time.
Well, I think that, that second time that you have gone through it, after the first one, you're looking, you're looking at those future projects and those other things that need to be done. The spaces, Ruthina and Lori and I were at Twain yesterday, and they need space. I mean, most of that gives us time to get to those spaces sooner.
Yeah, and we'll have finished a bunch, so actually looking at the future, there's fewer, is what I mean.
Sure.
The remainder of the plan, because we got something.
And, and along with this, I, you know, buildings, boundaries, some of the things we don't like talking about, cause it takes a lot of time, but... But, but we've got some things, we've got some work we have to do.
January, got some January boundary work we gotta start.
We do, and that's gonna take a lot of time, so let's be real about it. I mean, just, I'll put it out there, it takes a lot of time to do boundaries, a lot of community input, time, a lot of time at the board table, a lot of superintendent time. I mean, just real, real, realistically, a lot of time.
We're painting the golden gate bridge. And start going back on the other.
And we're all, that's...
And it's, it's perpetual.
Yeah, that's never gonna end, cause, well, we grow a district and need to learn.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have, but it's still a problem.
And we need space, so I, we know it has to happen, but it's, I'm just being cocky, I'm just, everybody's capacity.
Yeah. Well, they're all really good questions, and like I said, you know, my challenge to them was, give me the most aggressive model you have. We know what the board's passed. Now that you have options in front of you, and that's what we thought was our responsibility to present to you, given the concerns that people expressed as we went through the bond campaign, and then after we came out of the campaign on the, on the other end, and, and people who either had voted for it or hadn't expressed skepticism and concerns, and we tried to take that in, and we tried to listen to that. We tried to say, how do we address that in such a way that we build credibility, meet the needs of the kids, and then try to be fiscally responsible for the community?
So what are the next steps then? So, um, you've heard some of the concerns around capacity, community capacity, I'll say, um, flexibility, oversight throughout it. You want us to vote on something at the next board meeting, but I think we're gonna need some follow-up in terms of...
And by the end of November, I think would be his ideal.
Okay.
Or the first board meeting in December.
Yeah, I asked for the RFPs, but that wasn't anticipating that there was the possibility you would move forward. But it's just four proj, actually five, it's four construction projects and start the design work at City sooner.
And we asked for that.
And we need to do that.
Right, and that was one thing that we knew that the board wanted to see was that...
And that's all we're really asking you to approve, you can still debate the merits of the rest of it, so. I, they've all been told, you know, this is an RFP, it's a proposal, it's subject to board being okay with this.
Nope.
What's that?
People don't get paid for doing proposals?
Nope.
No, they don't, there's, there's no cost to us. I mean, there's, there's, I mean, we need to show goodwill on our part, I don't, I don't wanna waste their time because they're all good professional people, but they all know that there's a, that possibility, they've all dealt with the school boards, and every one of these have dealt with school projects, so. It, they're okay with it. They're, they're out there busy, can't you see the principals in those buildings right now? There've been several of them out there asking the principals what they think they need in those projects, so. In the case of high schools, I would love to have not done that, but, cause they have all kinds of ideas what they wanna do. What they, what we'll be able to do is another one.
So I, I think our next steps are really to look at those, those five projects. I think the City High one, I think is, we gathered from you that that was something that was important, we needed to work forward on the...
Design piece.
The design piece on City, so we can kind of set that aside. And then it's really looking at those other four and say, do we wanna accelerate those projects? And can we make a decision on that by the end of November, beginning of December preferably?
So you should note too, that I've made a real point with the architects, that on City High, that they need to identify a person that will read the effort, that will lead those community meetings and say meetings. And it isn't just because they're a good architect, they also have to be good communicators, okay? So I made that point, well-known, but that was gonna be very...
There will be a lot of meetings.
That would be very necessary at City High. And I, I made that point again this afternoon, I, that's, we sent them updates, but I've said it several times still, that they need to tell us who they propose to do, lead those meetings.
And do they have, I mean, that's not typically in your residential firms.
No, no, well...
Some firms are really good at it, some people, some firms have some really good people that we've worked with in the past. Uh, you know, one of the things that Dwayne said, one of the, the secret sauces in the mix for us is, is we have extensive meetings with staff. Um, and so when you go to those meetings, you can see how they facilitate getting input from people who live in the house. And some of them are really good at it, and some are a little awkward at it, so we've been able to watch them in action.
Some of them may go there with competitors too and say, hey, we wanna team up with you for that very reason, sure, okay? So that, that teaming up is, well, we did it at Longfellow, we did it at Mayans.
Maybe I just, I won't use the firm's name, but I'll just give you an example. We know one firm that we've worked with that actually went out and hired former educators that work with the firm now. So when she comes in, she talks the talk, because she's been there and done that. And so when she says to the teachers, what is it that you need, and they talk in educationese, you know how that works, that she understands exactly what they're talking about because she's been there in the classroom, she's done that. So the, the savvy architects are figuring that out.
And we can make adjustments as we go, we're gonna vote on every single one of these multiple times, and we'll have decisions to make.
Absolutely. Ten times.
In fact, each project.
And while we're busy getting ahead on this stuff, uh, we did request life cycle costs on, uh, rubberized play surfaces on playgrounds months ago. on rubberized plate surfaces on playgrounds months ago. And it's coming up more and more often. And I would appreciate it if we would get that life cycle report to us.
I actually started, Phil, I got a little sidetracked, so, but I get.
Well, I understand. You're out getting RFPs and things, so. But let's, I would appreciate it since that has been asked for several times.
You're here.
If you, if you want to give us the greatest chance of success with this particular option, I think you need to look at your next meeting at least having another conversation, if not an action. And if you don't believe that you can have an action at the fourteenth by the end of December, or November, your second meeting in November for sure, we would like to bring to you a recommendation on who these architects might be for these projects, okay? I really believe strongly that to do it in any other delayed way, we're going to have to shelve this idea and you need to task us with coming back with another idea. I don't think we can pull it off.
So we can start, I'm not sure, looking at most of the faces around the table, that there's comfort for, and I correct me if I'm wrong, for an action on the November fourteenth meeting. But I think additional, based on some of the questions and concerns that was raised, additional information being presented in hopes of perhaps taking an action by the end of November.
You'll actually be doing us a favor because it will give us more time to evaluate those RFPs.
Yeah, with a pretty compact agenda too.
And I'm just one person at the table, but I would really feel like, I would prefer if we had our visioning session first before we commit, because this is going to be a lot of time. And so a lot of things that we have big ideas will have to be secondary if we commit to this.
Isn't the visioning part of our retreat November sixth?
Is it November sixth?
No, our vision is not going to, not until November twenty-seven. Because our twin Harry is available.
Why don't I, why don't I talk to I A S B and talk to them about the sixth?
Of course. Because I.
Make room in Harry's schedule or maybe get one of their other folks to come.
Who's that?
Harry, how are you in front?
I mean, that's some, that would be.
I'll start that tomorrow.
I think for sure. See if you can get it on the sixth.
Yeah. We're kind of discussing the merits of the four and a half projects, we'll say, that are accelerated.
Focus on those.
I look at Tate and Alexander as very important things. I look at getting a design for City High as an important thing to get buy-in from the community as to what we're really going to do with that space. And then, you know, I know that the junior highs are crowded and need some work. But, you know, just be spitballing, looking at those five things, I put those at the end. Then maybe, you know, we'd have that conversation up there and people could say, "Well, I think you're full of crap." I get that a lot, but, you know, I think we should at least have the conversation with you and hope that we would then at least be able to say yea or nay on those projects specifically being accelerated on this plan. And then by time to look at all of the other stuff.
I think that's good.
And I guess if any other things that are farther out is, you know, the rest of the board members look at that and say, "You know what, I think we should accelerate this one that now."
Keep in mind, Sean, too, the temporary facilities that we need to move around and how they have to play into it.
Yeah, there's a piece.
Because all of us, when they're all overlapping.
Yeah.
No, that's how we've been doing it, you know? We move them in one summer, they go through the school year, then the next summer they get moved to the other facilities. That's what this is intended to say.
So just a procedural point, so that, that's a thing in the passage of documents, you're in a work session, it's more conversational. We do, as the board people, make a decision, something that we want. That's televised, this isn't, there's pros and cons. So that, we have a pretty full meeting, I think, for the November fourteenth meeting. I'm just putting it out there.
Maybe a couple of things to think about from that perspective. And you folks are great at forwarding your questions to us, so you got a couple of weeks.
We get lots of questions.
If you can send us your questions, that would be wonderful. And we could consider having a work session right after the meeting and go through, go through the Q and A.
Coming from, from the value of.
I think from the transparency of a board item televised, people can watch and, you know. I think there's, and comment, I think there's value in that.
Well, I'm wondering if then, if we can have what the proposal would be that we would take action on and all knowing in the back of our heads that we could, at the November fourteenth meeting, say, "All right, we're going to table the vote until the next one."
Can it just be a discussion item?
Could just be a discussion item. You could have the proposals in front of you without.
People say, "We're going to be up the busy at that meeting anyway." So maybe, I don't know, ask it too much.
Maybe we can have something clear, I mean, if this is more urgent.
I can take a look at it when I draft it up.
I don't know.
Send ideas.
I mean, that's something that we can discuss.
Like special education update, maybe, I don't know if that can be in the back. Is this, no?
Let me, let me scope them out. Let me scope them out, work with the admin team and get some timeframes for the items in terms of how long they think it would take to present and discuss. And then maybe we can do some balancing with that and see how that looks. And I'll work on that tomorrow. All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate the time, energy and effort at this time of the evening.
Dang, long days.